All right, very good. Welcome, everyone, to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. The day's date is November 13th, 2024. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building and is also being offered in a live streaming feature. The meeting will also be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance of tonight's meeting will provide as part of the posted agenda. Mr. Taylor, if you could please summarize any public comment received.
No public comments were received, Mr. President.
Thank you. And at this time, please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection out of the service, men and women who place themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
Make that motion?
There's a motion, is there a second?
Aye.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Please record a unanimous vote. We have a full slate of our board tonight. I would also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of its November 11th, 2024 workshop meeting to discuss three personnel matters. And at this time, the board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing as though we have no other humans in the room with us, I think we can move on from public comment. Do we have some Zoom watchers? Seven Zoom watchers, well, thank you for being here on Zoom. And at this time, we will now go to our committee reports. And I will start as the chairman of the Public Safety Committee. And the first section is in regards to the always stop intersection on Hawes Lane. I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, Section 107-28, Schedule 5, Stop Intersection Subsection A, by authorizing an always-stop condition at the intersection of Hawes Lane and Green Hill Road in Erdenheim. The modifications are consistent with the recommendations contained in an always-stop control analysis dated April 30th, 2024 by Matthew Hammond, P.E., Traffic Planning and Design, in conjunction with the construction of the proposed towns at Pennybrook Residential Development and adjacent public park. So that is my motion. Do we have a second? Any questions or comments?
In order for the stop signs to be made enforceable, so all the stop signs are ordained in where we cover new stops.
Correct. And did we push up the schedule originally going to be enforced later? If you could just comment on that.
That's correct, yes. So the original plan was for the stop signs to be installed upon the completion of the development and the opening of the park due to the anticipated increase in traffic that would be created by both. However, the developer, upon looking at the construction phasing and scheduling, would like to close that sidewall during the majority of the construction activities, or at least until they get the foundations in the ground and the demolition and some tree removal completed. And we thought it would be safer if we provided a crossing before that development started in advance rather than waiting until the end. So there'll now be a crosswalk and stop signs at Green Hill for people to cross over to the opposite side of Hawes, continue down, and then cross back over at the school where there's another crosswalk.
And guard.
And a guard during the school hours.
And this will be, assuming it passes, we can take those covers off tomorrow?
The covers will come off tomorrow. There'll be red blinking lights installed atop the signs that'll be on there for a period of time. There's variable message signage that is out there now advising people of the upcoming change to that intersection. The police will monitor it and are likely to issue warnings initially, but they will be there monitoring it. There'll be a break-in period, so to speak.
Okay, great.
This work has commenced, Mike.
Demolition activities have commenced only.
You envision an ordinance, though, right?
It's not an ordinance, it's a modification to the existing code schedule, yes. That's what the motion was, to amend the code.
Can you amend the code without an ordinance?
It's been done for years. I'm in the scheduling.
Is it because it's on a schedule?
Yeah, one of the schedules.
You're just adding a line item?
You're just adding into one of the sections of the existing schedule.
Okay.
And, Mike, was there any further traffic study on Hawes?
Not as a result of this development.
It's still...
There was a traffic study completed for the whole entire thing, but it didn't recommend any further changes. In fact, we asked as one of the suggestions that came up about stop signs in that area, if they would consider the stop sign placement, and they had a mechanic engineer look at it.
Could you update us on the known scheduling and status of demolition activities or anything else that you know about the present schedule of events at that project?
It's in your book. So demolition is underway. They anticipate that's going to be about a two- to three-week period. They are waiting the receipt of their NPDES permit, which is a permit that's issued through the Conservation District for the grading and construction activities. And upon completion of, or upon receipt of that, we'll have a pre-construction meeting and we will issue a notice to proceed with the balance of the work. So it's dependent upon their permit.
And just curious, has there generally been, or has there been any feedback from any two fellow commissioners on the stop sign?
I haven't received anything.
Like, you know, positive or negative, either way, just curious. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? We had a motion and a second, we had comment, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote. And that concludes my report. We will now go to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one motion tonight, planning assistance contract. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the engagement of the Montgomery County Planning Commission through a professional planning assistance contract for the years 2025 through 2027. The county provides planning assistance for the review of all subdivision and land development applications, as well as structured assistance as requested by the township recommended by the county. The 2025-27 contract includes general services to include evening meeting attendance, subdivision and land development reviews, contingency services and technical assistance, and structured assistance to include a comprehensive review of the township zoning code. The costs associated with the contract are shared equally by Springfield Township and Montgomery County, and the 2025 township share is $13,860 and will increase to $14,272.50 in 2026 and $14,701.50 in 2027. That is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Mike, it was the suggestion on Monday that we might be paying for more time than we may be using.
Yeah, spoke with the county and they revised the contract. So we reduced the number of evening meeting attendance from 24, which would be two per month, to 18 per year. As a result of that, you're going to see a savings of $3,894 over the course of the contract. We're averaging somewhere between 15 and 22 meetings over the last several years. Asked the question of, can we pay on a per-meeting basis? And they generally do not do that. But they generally, if there's any unused time, like they put that to good use, like during the daytime hours. I think you're kind of hedging your bets with 18, and you're going to see about a $1,000 reduction in the contract. So all on my bet.
In the event that there is a need for 19th meeting, is there a charge?
No.
Good question. Good answer.
Yeah, it's, we're all work cooperatively and they're not in it for the profit, they're in it for the good of the community to try and offer their assistance.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We'll now go to the Chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs and Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, regarding the bill listing, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the October check reconciliation in the amount of $1,252,436.22 and the November bill listing in the amount of $1,229,754.36. That's my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Next, regarding the budget schedule for 2025's budget, the meeting schedule is as follows. You'll hear the budget presentation this evening, followed by the budget hearing, which will be held on December 11th at 7:30, which will quickly be followed, but with the budget adoption at that same meeting on the 11th of December. Each of those meetings will be held at the Springfield Township Building, and that moves us into the 2025 budget presentation. The Springfield Township Board of Commissioners proposes a balanced operating budget for 2025 of $20,317,187 with a real estate tax rate of 4.65 mils and an earned income tax rate of 1%. To summarize, the impact on the typical residential taxpayer as a result of the 2025 budget presentation, the taxpayer will realize an increase of $23.50 to their 2025 real estate tax and a $5.48 increase to the annual refuse service fee. The proposed tax increase of $23.50 per household, 3%, is the first such increase in three years. The 2024 refuse fee was increased by $13.98 due to a higher waste disposal and recycling fees. The typical household in Springfield Township with a $175,400 property assessment will pay $815.61 in real estate taxes in 2025. The proposed operating budget of $20,317,187 is $670,240 or 3.4% more than it was in 2024. That increase of 3.1% can be attributed to increased expenses for public safety and fire protection, employee wages and benefits, insurances, library services, parks and recreation expenditures, and capital projects. Revenue increases associated with earned income and other local enabling taxes, departmental earnings, interests, and rents will offset the increased expenditures. The 2025 discounted refuse service fee will increase from $252.8 to $257.56 or 2.2% per household due to increases in employee wages, vehicle expenses, waste disposal fees, and capital contributions for replacement equipment. Pursuant to the terms of the Waste Disposal Contract with Covanta, Sustainable Solutions, the cost to dispose of household waste will rise from $79 per ton in 2024 to $82.75 per ton in 2025. The average monthly cost to process and market single-stream recyclables was $62.05 per ton in 2024, but is projected to decrease to $35.87 per ton in 2025. After increasing during the COVID pandemic, the amount of household refuse and recyclables collected by the township has decreased each year since 2022, and in 2025 is projected to decrease again by an additional 290 tons. The township will continue to fund its general budgetary obligations through traditional revenue sources such as real estate tax, earned income tax, real estate transfer tax, mercantile and business privilege tax, licenses and permits, fines, and departmental earnings. In 2019, a local services tax was enacted whereby individuals employed within Springfield Township now pay $1 per week or $52 annually through payroll deduction. Those who do not earn more than $12,000 annually are exempt from that tax. The township anticipates the receipt of an additional $25,000 in revenues from the local services tax in 2025. 2025 preliminary budget will be made available for inspection in the office of the Township Manager at 1510 Paper Mill Road in Windmore and in the Township Library as well at 8900 Hawthorne Lane in Windmore, beginning 5:00 PM on November 15th. 2025 preliminary budget will also be posted to the township website on or before the above date. Summary copies of the budget are also available upon request. The Board of Commissioners will accept questions and comments on the budget at their workshop meeting on December 11th at 7:00 PM and again as part of the budget hearing and budget adoption on December 13th.
11.
11. So the workshop on the night?
Workshop is on the night.
Okay, sorry. So the comments will be on the ninth and then again on the 11th. All aforementioned meetings will be conducted at the Springfield Township Administration Building, again, at 1510 Paper Mill Road. And that is the 2025 budget statement. Next, regarding the zoning hearing board for the month of November, there were no petitions or applications received, so the November zoning hearing board monthly meeting will be canceled. The next month of the zoning hearing board is scheduled for Monday, December 16th at 7:30 in the Springfield Township building. And that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. We will now go to the Chairwoman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Ratzabon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one motion and an announcement today. First, I'm going to move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract to Port Landscape Architecture and Design of Philadelphia in accordance with their proposal dated September 13, 2024 for the 1725 Walnut Avenue Master Plan. The proposed project schedule shall be 20 to 24 weeks in length and will include a minimum of four community events or meetings. The total cost of the contract shall not exceed $49,994, for which 50% or $24,997 will be paid by a grant that has been obtained from the Pennsylvania DCNR Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. The remainder of the contract will be funded by the American Recovery Plan Act, also known as ARPA funds. On August 1st, 2024, Springfield Township issued a request for proposals to conduct a needs assessment, master plan, and design services for the former Tank Car Corporation of America property at 1725 Walnut Avenue in Orland. A total of five proposals were received, ranging in price from $44,560 to $91,855. After completing a review of the proposals received and interviewing three firms, the steering committee created by the Board of Commissioners to guide the master planning process has recommended Port as the preferred consultant. Springfield Township residents are encouraged to monitor the township website to stay informed about the planning process for this very exciting project, but ultimately, that is my motion to award the contract to Port.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
I just want just one comment. What was so appealing about Port's proposal?
Well, I think a number of reasons. I think the main one that I heard at the committee was that they were very excited to tackle what we'll call a challenging project. They were clearly well-versed and qualified on the engineering aspects, on the brownfield site aspect of it, but particularly, they were notably excited about tackling the project and collectively, as designers and engineers came together and selected that project to apply for, they noted that the site, while it's in a, what we would call, a traditionally suburban space, really mirrors a lot of urban spaces that they're accustomed to, and I found that to be really compelling, and their enthusiasm was very compelling. Jim, would you agree?
Yeah, for sure, and I think that was the consensus in this group. All three firms seemed very capable, so it wasn't like that obvious of a choice in terms of the gap between them.
Right, yeah. This just seemed like a very, 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 very small job for a very, very big firm.
So good question. I asked that question there, and I think that's where the enthusiasm came out, that you can really be creative here. So and they partner with urban engineers, which is obviously a mess.
I think that's also a value for us, I think, just that a firm like this would typically go after a project like this, but it could really provide some interesting opportunities and ideas and brainstorming sessions to see what, like you said, a very large firm like this can really see for a space like this.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Next, and again, everyone, please look out for that project and stay informed. I know a long time coming, I'm sure, for some staff members here. Next, this is going to another exciting project, the Recreation Center Master Plan. I'd like to announce that a third and final community meeting for Phase 1 of the Recreation Center Master Plan project will take place next Wednesday, on Wednesday, November 20th, at 6:00 PM here in the Springfield Township Building. The meeting will include a presentation from MKSD Architects, which will include an overview and history of the existing community center property, a summary of the needs assessment and data collection work completed to date, a review of the existing site and building conditions, an updated project timeline, and anticipated next steps. And importantly, the event will also include several discussion stations to continue gathering community feedback and continue to seek out everyone's ideas, feedback for the site. We're really excited for it, so that is my announcement, and that concludes my report. Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Ratzabon. We'll now go to the Chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner May.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll begin with the recycling report. During the month of October 2024, Springfield Township residents recycled 172.6 tons of material with a household participation rate of 60.5%. The net cost for the month was $15,585.25. Next, a reminder on cardboard containers. The board would like to remind residents to remove all packing materials from cardboard boxes prior to placing them out for collection. Packing materials such as plastic bags, bubble wrap, and polystyrene, styrofoam packaging are not recyclable and are treated as residue. Cardboard that is contaminated with packaging materials costs the township $70 per ton to dispose of, while clean corrugated cardboard presently has a sales value of $110 per ton. As the holiday season approaches, residents are also asked to flatten all cardboard containers so that they take up less room in the township's collection vehicles and require fewer trips to the processing facility. Fewer trips equates to less fuel being consumed, reduced exhaust emissions, and less wear and tear on equipment, so everybody's assistance there would be greatly appreciated.
And no greasy pizza boxes?
No greasy pizza boxes. Yeah, it's got to be clean corrugated cardboard, and then we're helping out the environment and helping out our own township there.
I've heard some people say they'll cut out a circle and recycle the rest.
I love it.
It's aggressive, but I like it.
I like that dedication.
Greasy pizza boxes are good kindling for fireworks.
That's true. Get the oil there to burn. Next up is...
I have a question.
Yes.
So what about the necessity of removing the, like, the heavy plastic tape that holds these cardboard boxes together? Is that required or is that acceptable?
I'm not certain on that, I'd have to check on that.
Yeah, we haven't gotten guidance. That's been a problem. I mean, if you want to go all out and be, you know, committed, totally committed, like some of the people who are cutting circles out of their pizza box, have at it, like it's not going to be a detriment.
Yeah, I would hate just, you know, because it has, you know, some material wrapping on it or something, you know? I could see if somebody has a homemade package and they duct taped the heck out of it, that's probably a problem.
Yeah, that'll probably get looked at twice by the guys out on the trucks, you know, one of whom is listening at home right now in Florida, and they'll probably leave that aside and it'll get picked up by the trash guys, or we'll pick it up later on.
Yeah, I typically remove it, but I might be the only person in my household. I'm usually cleaning up our recyclables Tuesday night. All right, then on to ordinance number 979 regarding recycling. Again, we're staying on topic. I move that the Board of Commissioners enact ordinance number 979, an ordinance amending Chapter 72 Recycling of the Code of the Township of Springfield by adding a definition for the term "community activities." While reviewing the township's annual recycling performance grant application for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2023, the Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, requested that a definition be added so the township's recycling ordinance is consistent with Act 101 of 1988, the Waste Planting, Recycling, and Reduction Act. That is my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
All right, and then moving on to Resolution Number 1651. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1651, a resolution authorizing the submission of a municipal Opportunities for Retrofits Energy Efficiency, otherwise known as MORE, program grant to be submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. The grant proposal is for services and equipment valued up to $50,000 to be used for a Level 2 commercial energy audit and energy conservation measures for the police administration, library, and public works buildings. The grant application shall be prepared by Practical Energy Solutions in accordance with their proposal dated November 11th, 2024, for a fee not to exceed $500. That is my resolution.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
That is my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you indeed, Commissioner May. We'll now go to the Chairwoman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Mecktamer.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are three items for tonight. First is Pennsylvania Avenue. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the expenditure of $5,000 to complete a multi-municipal, multimodal review of Pennsylvania Avenue Corridor in Springfield and Upper Dublin Townships. The scope of work shall include an inventory of missing sidewalk connections, ADA ramp conditions, traffic and pedestrian signal updates, right-of-way analysis, and preliminary cost estimates to facilitate improvements for pedestrian connectivity within and between the two townships. That's my motion.
Great, we have a motion, is there a second? Second. Questions or comments?
Quick question. I didn't fully understand on Monday why sort of the project or the future envision of a crossover bridge from the Walnut Avenue Park further down Pennsylvania Avenue wouldn't be looped into this as well.
And you're asking for...
You know, if we're looking at the sort of the scope of connecting between the two townships along Pennsylvania Avenue, it's sort of, I guess, what, north of, and we eventually want to have some sort of connection from the existing Walnut Avenue Park to Upper Dublin further down, why we wouldn't loop that into sort of the overall master plan for that area?
Well, I think it'll be referred to in any future grant applications that we put in because of the opportunities for connections further into Springfield Township, but the scope or phase of this particular contract is to identify the deficiencies along the Pennsylvania Avenue corridor itself right now within and between the two communities. Like, we already know what the project will look like and what we need to do to get from Sandy Run Park over to the, I'll call it the Penn Manor Trail in that community. We don't need to spend the money with this particular engineer to identify what needs to be done there. What we're doing now is we're spending the money with an engineer and planner to identify the deficiencies along Pennsylvania Avenue right now. We already know what the deficiencies are between the Sandy Run Park and the proposed or the existing trail. What we're looking for now is what's missing along Pennsylvania Avenue?
And I guess, I guess, so what's the trail called on the Upper Dublin side?
Pizac?
Called Pizac.
No, from Sandy Run. Is it Pizac?
It's the Pizac Preserve.
So
Maintained by Wasakeness.
So again, envision down the road, would someone be able to kind of loop? I mean, so there's there is full connection once you get to the Upper Dublin side, back up to the area along Pennsylvania Avenue that we're looking at?
So as of today, you could go from the Pen Manor Townhome Community all the way over to the Springfield Manor Community across Pennsylvania Avenue at the trail crossing that was constructed by the developer into the Upper Dublin side on the I think they call that the Washington Manor Development. And that can take you all the way up to a point along Dreschertown Road where it stops, right? So the same I guess, question you're raising is, well, why don't we include something along Dreschertown Road to get us to pick a point, Manufacturers Country Club? What we're focusing on now is the Pennsylvania Avenue connections to get somebody from, say, Orlando Avenue down to the Washington Manor Trail and from on the Springfield side to get from Heritage Drive down to that Orleans Mill Road trail connection or up to the Pennsylvania or to the Bridge Street Crossing where they can get over to the Upper Dublin side and then down.
Oh, and also I'm, you know, obviously glad we're doing this. I'm glad Upper Dublin is is cooperating with us on this. I know a lot of our residents have asked for increased walkability and and access there on Pennsylvania Avenue because it really is disjointed, right? Depending on where you live, you can you can get to the crosswalk, but you can't get elsewhere or you can't cross at all, you know, even at Bridge Tree. So it's not an easy, whatever the solution is, we know it's not easy or cheap. But I'm happy this is happening. So thank you for putting this together. Right, we're splitting 50/50. The engineers. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record unanimous vote.
The second item is regarding Hillcrest Pond. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement of public bids to conduct a partial dredging project at Hillcrest Pond in Cisco Park in Erdenheim. The scope of work shall include the physical removal of an undetermined amount of accumulated sediment from within the pond, falling off and offsite disposal of the material.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Okay, lastly, regarding Black Horse Inn, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the township manager to execute a lease agreement between Springfield Township and Christine Kelly Huntington Valley, PA, to lease Suite B at the Black Horse Inn located at 1432 Bethlehem Palace in Flower Town. The initial term of the lease shall begin January 1st, 2025, and end December 31st, 2025, at the rate of $1,000 per month plus utilities. The lease shall also include two one-year options at $1,030 per month in 2026 and $1,060 per month in 2027.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
And Mike, does that mean that the Black Horse will now be fully
It'll be 100% occupied.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner McTamar. We'll now go to the Chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, Commissioner Morris.
I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris.
And that concludes my report.
That concludes all our reports. And I will now say that the board is once again open to receiving public comment. With no public humans here, we will
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Mike, can you also opine for a second on the open fire ban? And if we got a decent rainfall over a weekend, could people make a fire pit in their backyard or is when what would be lifted?
That would be up to the fire marshal's decision. And he would act not alone, but on what every other, you know, fire marshal and municipality around us is doing right now. Everybody is aware, we haven't had significant or substantial rain in well over a month. So things are just a tinderbox out there right now. And out of an abundance of caution, we're just asking people to hold off on that as much as everybody might enjoy doing that at this time of the year. It's just the downside is just too high. In fact, there was a pretty significant brush fire that was over in a neighboring township last weekend that I know some of our firefighters responded to as well. And that was in a, you know, a developed community. So.
At this point, I will accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record unanimous vote. And we are adjourned.
Good.